Call meeting, Congress Mission Order, this is county one.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion in the second. Ballroom, there's the eye.
Aye.
Eye, proposal inside.
I think I had one in there that wasn't on the list for, it's pretty big for our chip seal project. Fifty hundred and sixty-eight thousand. We did bid that job when he was under bid, so.
Motion will prove that though. The motion is rejected. Chip seal project.
No, there was some in there.
Oh, okay.
Please.
I don't think it's in here.
It's not on the list?
Uh, no, it's on the list, no. It was, uh, it was our seal co- seal code job on county three that Morris Seal Co., so they, they got it done now and they were roughly ten thousand under bid. Three hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight oh five once.
Unless we're on a separate motion. So go and make a motion. Heiser, Beeseth?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
From?
Aye.
Motion carried.
This is just three sixty-eight, just three sixty-eight, eight oh five, it's a separate motion. And now they'll do the bills.
Who is that two Kevin?
Uh, Morris Seal Co.
Morris, that was just?
Morris. It's actually the name of the town, Morris.
Yes.
Yeah.
The month of May, David?
June.
This would be June.
June.
To the twenty eighth of September.
Approve your financial reports. Oh. I gotta confuse. There's a motion, is there a second on bills?
Second.
Motion in the second, roll call please.
Heiser?
Aye.
Martins?
Aye.
From?
Aye.
Beeseth?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Approve financial reports. Everything's in.
Yep. Is there any questions, buddy?
Oh.
Is the money coming in from the state on, um, on social services?
Yes.
Coming in once a month? Okay.
Okay.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Martins?
Aye.
From? Beeseth?
Aye.
Heiser?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Visitors, visitors and delegations.
I have a question about, um, about speed limit sign that was moved out on county one by Frieson. The county one, after Frieson, they've changed the speed limit sign to pass Walley Drive.
Yeah, we, we talked about that last winter, I think. And, uh, we decided to move it out further. Uh, we did move it past Walley Drive just because we didn't think people should be speeding up before they got to the intersection, but.
It's a long stretch from after Frieson to Walley Drive. You could change it to thirty-five the whole way.
I think the discussion we had then was it was too nighty and people were speeding up and making too much noise to the vehicles.
But you're driving, you're driving thirty-five, you're speeding up from thirty-five to fifty on an open area. If you push it past that, people are gonna speed up again in the next couple offices.
I thought it was a good idea to, you know, have it so that at Frieson and then there's a row of houses on the north side, road there, Wendell Wilson and Riggins and those guys. Because a lot of times bus does stop at Wendell Wilson's, so to hold everybody down that part bridge would probably be a good idea. I agree with you even from that aspect, that once you get past Wendell's turnoff and stuff like that, you know, you gotta keep people moving, you gotta keep that traffic moving. A lot of people do turn off on Walley Drive, but if it's gonna stay at that speed all the way around, all the way to the country club, uh, what's, what's really the? He turns up here. What's the difference?
Originally, the sign was about right here, so it started speeding up somewhere between here and there. Now we've moved it to right about here.
Okay, where does it slow down again?
Slows down right here also if they're coming this way.
Okay, when you're going farther west, you go around the curve, it slows down?
Nope, this is all fifty. There's a, there's a yellow flag underneath the skirt sign that says forty-five, but that's just for the curb, it's just a suggested speed. I mean, as far as enforcement, the speed limit is fifty through there, and all we start slowing down about right here again.
Are those people moving to move it out there when there's no housing out there?
It was too much noise for these people that live here. People were speeding up and they couldn't sit down on their decks and enjoy themselves.
I wonder if, I know the township board does talk about that issue from time to time, I wonder if it wouldn't be an idea to, you know, get some recommendations from them as well. But somewhere in between there would probably be a happy medium. But like Kevin says, you don't probably want us increase the speed when you get to the intersection, I mean, that's, uh.
That's what we thought, you know, if, uh, people are speeding up here and you're sitting at this intersection watching this traffic come at you, they're speeding up, coming faster, that was the thought. We just put that sign where we want it.
You know, I, I think that's why you can slow through that intersection. If you're gonna, if you're gonna have a thirty-five all the way out to that intersection, it should be thirty-five all the way because there's a lot of houses and places we turn off, the country club road and, and the crafts and everything that lives along the other road. So they're at fifty, going by their place.
You're kinda giving special consideration to those people up in that Riggins subdivision, like all those people over there, they're doing the same thing, they're sitting on their.
You wanna make a motion or a second?
I, I mean, I, I think we need input from township.
Yeah.
I think, I think it needs to be township input because you are giving special consideration to that, a lot of houses up there. I can see the safety concern with, and I think that, you know, speeding up on, before you get to Walley Drive is a.
There's no difference, it's a saturation of, uh, traffic coming on the highway in both places, especially at Frieson, but I don't think it should be thirty-five all the way out. I'm not saying that, I'm just saying we should find a happy medium so that we can keep the Frieson and Reagan people happy, but yet keep traffic moving. Go to forty all the way out? I made that. Kevin, yes.
I look at, go forty?
All the way.
There was no concern before, nobody drew attention before, tell people build houses there, and now they speed up, there's no accident on it. There was not a, not a concern for that intersection before, the only concern is people complain about people speeding up or change the speed limit on the highway, on the interstate. Just because people speed up, you know, you gotta keep traffic moving through there. But just 'cause a couple people built houses there and they wanna sit on their deck, they don't want people speeding up. Speeding up from thirty-five to fifty, you're not going from twenty-five to seventy.
It's not like you're punching it.
No, that's what they're doing. I was told that's what they're doing.
That's what they're doing. Well, maybe.
Maybe once or twice, it might depend.
Maybe the sheriff's department should go out there and find those, uh, puncher.
If, if you drive that, you can see that's not even natural to stay thirty-five, and you can hardly keep your speed down. It's, it's open, so, and all that traffic gets funneled out on the highway twenty, and it's fifty-five there.
Yeah.
Right, you know, it changes to forty-five, and so all of that's getting funneled out to fifty-five traffic, so it's.
Fifty-five where?
On highway twenty where almost people go out on their twenty.
It's forty.
They, they moved that to forty-five now.
Just right at that intersection.
Yeah.
Yeah, right at the liquid intersection.
Yeah, if you're going north, if you're going south, uh.
But not if you're going north, it's fifty-five if you're going north.
Forty-five if you're going north.
It changes right there.
I probably need some speeding tickets to.
I got one.
Oh, you did?
Which Walley Drive?
Uh, yeah, fifty.
Fifty.
So, that funnel, since we put those signs up, I'm sure that funneled a lot of traffic that direction now.
Onto Walley Drive, so that they can go faster?
That's just my guess, I, I have another traffic counter, I think, but.
You know, there's a lot of traffic coming from the south too, sometimes you wait for a couple minutes and it seems like forever just to get on twenty coming in from that way, so they jump over and come in on nineteen. Right. We moved a sign about a third of the way, I think that's correct.
Not sure you're that far.
No.
Quarter mile?
Might, probably.
Quarter mile.
Probably.
Seventeen hundred feet.
Slowing down for seventy hundred feet.
Quarter mile is thirteen to forty.
Well, whatever it'd be, I mean, it wasn't very far.
The other, the other issue people have is when they come down Walley Drive, the signage, they come down Walley Drive and take a left on the county one, there's no signs. People are used to fifty miles per hour and they're, they're turning going fifty because they're used to.
Going east.
Going east.
Going east, yeah.
Yep, so the signs on Walley Drive, on, are on county one on the west side of county four.
County one.
So, they're coming out Walley Drive, turning down, and they're hitting fifty, like to Frieson, like everybody used to. So now there's no signs anymore, people are going fifty, people are going thirty-five, people are, you know, something.
They put a halfway in between, we got a, we have a bike trail there, we have a walking path there, right?
Well, there's never, never been any issue with any, that I know of any accidents or.
Probably not accidents.
But, I mean, so the, the only reason for you to change it was because a couple people on the north side said, I don't wanna hear people speed up their cars. But.
Bill's thinking, we should write your township's got to say. So I get their suggestion anyway and be able to say anything.
I think the township's suggestion would be a good idea and.
That way it's a combined.
But I, but I do think you're right, if the speed limit going west is thirty-five miles an hour, it should not be fifty miles an hour going right.
It's not, it's just not signed.
We just need to see the sign, we just need to go one more thirty-five mile an hour speed limit sign up, that'll take care of that whole problem.
Kevin, you travel on roads quite often, right?
Uh-huh.
What do you think? I don't travel much, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, you know, honestly, the people speeding up there, the only thing I can see is motorcycles that might be out there making noise, they, they would definitely be noisy, but.
Would a noise ordinance be a better solution than?
It's hard to enforce, is the only thing.
Speed limit.
That's what we want with the law, they're proving.
Where you can enforce the speed limit.
That township has a local unit that they put out around that shows what your speed is, is and stuff, and it really is kinda neat to watch it, it hits you for quite a ways out. For speeding or noise? It's, it's more for speeding, so that people can be aware of what, how bad, they put it in Frieson, they put it out at Lakewood, they put it on the Draper Road.
It's one of the signs that tells you how fast you're going, you know.
Well, I guess my point is, then the family living on the corner of, of, um, Walley Drive there. So then people are gonna punch it when they get there, so that, so these people lost their noise and then we're gonna halfway, other ones gain it. I mean, I, I, I'm just trying to be fair here, but I don't think anybody's, I think, I think it's a case of the squeaky wheel got the grace.
I think we'd be better off as far as noise, if we set something, when they come out of Frieson at forty or forty-five, we just keep it there all the way, you know. So if they go ten mile an hour, that's fine, or five, or whatever, what is it by the Frieson?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, if others do that, then that's probably fast enough.
Yes, it is, absolutely.
That might be too fast. Awful lot of traffic from the Frieson, but by the time you flow everybody out of Lakewood.
There's a lot of foot lanes.
That's, that's, that's about equal to that, so. You know, they're coming on fifty-five all the way in, so.
Or fifty.
But it used to be more people would come from down the hill, though, like Lakewood don't use Walley Drive. Because using fifty-seven down in that intersection, that's just like, I got it, which is a suicide that intersection is terrible, you know.
There should be a, there should actually be.
Lakewood, it's just, you are putting, you're like putting somebody else's hands there, you know.
You want to be a real place for Mike Olson Bill?
Bill?
My mate, I live in Friesland, and I know what the young man's talking about going west because we're used to going fifty, and I'm not that far from the highway. The only time I hear racket is either motorcycles or hot rod cars. That's the only time you hear noise where we live. And thirty-five by Frieson, I know people complain, but there's times that's too fast because you get a lot of people walking, it's not just car traffic going on up to that walk. But that's that, I myself, I come out of there, it's like, ooh, Draper's on thirty-five.
The other issue is then you have is like Kevin mentioned, if you move the sign a little bit on the other side, that people are gonna speed up through that intersection, and they already gonna see that sign thirty-five, and they're gonna speed up from the thirty-five. So.
I think we should, like Bill said, get together the township.
We talked about the township.
Set up something that, you know, that's.
You're out of township, right?
I was in the township.
The safety issue is, you know, we gotta be very concerned there, so. And thirty-five if you freeze on it, it'll probably be fast like you say. There's a lot of people turning and stopping and turning, and there's no turn lane.
And walking.
Only place to stop is right on the highway, you know, if you wait for an oncoming car, maybe. The amount of traffic through there is just phenomenal, and then you take what's going on fifty-seven to. Uh, it's, there's a lot, a lot of traffic through there. There's people ducking every direction to try to keep everybody moving.
We've got a traffic count for county one, that's, the township put the sign out there, and it's interesting to see, you know, it, it tells by the hour how many cars and what speed they're going. And then you can see after the sign is there for a while how people start slowing down. You know, the sign works.
I had a troll tell me once from the Devil's Lake out to the casino, that was the busiest highway in North Dakota at one time, this was a few years ago, now I imagine there's busier ones all the way west, but. That was the busiest highway at the most people count in North Dakota. Now, what is it? Speed limit's there at fifty.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
But that's not going to put it, because my mom's out of the window there anymore, so.
So would that be acceptable then, Rich, to, uh, you know, ask the township and, uh, see what their employees on it and bring it back?
Sure. Do you?
Anybody else have anything?
I got something. I live on the county road ten, I farm along there, and I think there's a serious issue with the height of the culverts that are going in, they're too high. I just wanted everybody, what do you guys know about it?
You're, when you say they're too high, you say?
The new ones they're putting in are higher than the old ones, they're quite a bit.
So you're not gonna get the drainage until it gets?
Oh. They were being overdamped or, or, they just started running this morning.
That's, I think they're addressing it as far as.
Yeah, we, we had, we had two culverts that went in too high, um, one of them was the, one of the gusts from their place, there was three tents too high. And we're gonna put in a ditch on the north side of the road and take it down to that Hagel culvert at the, at the next intersection. So we'll just take that through the ditch so that it looks the same elevation, and then the next one down, um. Uh, see drains off of May Fleischer's, uh, north through the road.
No.
Why are they going too high?
Because we, we guess we would design them, as we took our survey, we laid a culvert in where the new toe of the embankment, because we're, you know, winding the road quite a bit. We just matched that to where the existing ground was, and then there was a couple little narrow cuts that were, weren't picked up in the survey, that were a little, you know, a couple tents lower. So the culvert got put in, you know, higher than it should have been, and that happened twice, so.
I, I'm still wondering, why, why were they putting too high, was, wasn't there an elevation, they were told to, do you put it in that?
Well, we, the way, like I said, the way, okay, we reamed up the road, your toes of the embankment are out further than they were before.
Yeah.
And where that met the existing ground, it was higher than where the old culvert was. And those old, and one of the old culverts, the one that, um, closer to, my closest there was, silved it in, filled up, filled in with dirt. So we didn't want that to happen again, so we set it at a higher elevation, letting it, if they could have possibly cleaned it out after, you know, and maintained that drainage.
Oh, yeah.
So what we did do, what we're doing to address that is cutting in a couple V ditches, one from that culvert. So it all looks at the same elevation, so they'll be able to, you know, maintain that well, and then they'll have two culverts draining the same drainage that one, so it'll be.
So.
And they're doing a contract unit prices for both the culvert through the approach and for the coven excavation, so. Because we, Kevin and I were out at the site last week and addressed the one, and we found another one.
I think the one further west is wrong too, by the curves.
Okay, a question for both of yous, this ditch that you're talking about putting in to take care of the drainage, because of the culvert being too high, is that gonna be able to handle the water that comes? I, I don't know, I'm just asking, because I don't know there. Except there's a way where you don't end up with drawn belt on prop because of it, or that?
Yes, because the other culvert's still there, even if it's a little bit higher, it's still, you know, in high flows like that, it'll, like, it's like up two culverts flowing out instead of one. Just like some of the other crossings, in other areas where you have, you know, a couple culverts higher than the others, some high flows.
Well, definitely, take care of high water, but what I'm asking is this ditch you're talking about putting in?
Yeah.
To handle the water, the low water, is, is that ditch gonna be able to sufficiently handle it so it doesn't end up? I don't know how many acres you're talking.
At the low flow, it's just a trickle coming into it, so I mean, it's just gonna be?
No. I'm asking you to.
Well, that's, that one I'm talking about, I don't, that's not my land, but I got one further down.
Okay.
I can see they're too high, I mean, they gotta be this high, much higher than the, I assume they're eight inches high, I don't know, but I, I can't, I don't have a.
What one of them was on, uh, Fleischer's?
But I, the one that Russell Erickson trusts.
Okay.
Where you move the culvert. Further east, that one looks high too, I know it's high.
We can take a look at that one.
And then all the culverts you put in, in it. Around the curve going further north to approaches, they don't hold water, but now they got water, you know, it's just like, well.
Well, none of them, they, they, they just said either.
So we.
But I just wanna make this out there now before it's done and then we got problems.
Yeah.
Because what, what are you guys gonna do with the ones in the water? Are they gonna be too high too then?
No.
Forty years from now, the lake goes down, we got a problem there or something?
Um.
I mean, I can't see those.
How many culverts have we put in all, altogether?
There's twelve hundred feet of them, um, and ten or twelve through the road.
And you've got how many in?
Some here and some there, now, we got three or four on the, in the ride in the east end. And there's the big four, one, four, one of the, one of the D fights now, and more bigger ones in, now, not in yet, they've just got the kind of berms built out in the water.
I think someone better be out there and check and make sure these get in a, the correct depth.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna cause any more problems.
You've got people on the site every day, right?
Yeah, yeah, and they're, and they're getting put in for planning, but, uh, basically the, you know, plans were right in those two, in those two culverts.
I think they should check all the culverts over.
Yeah, and, you know, like.
And the two we're gonna just.
So that's gonna, that's gonna fix the problem, that V ditch, the, the V ditches, that's gonna fix the problem?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, we better be.
They'll actually improve it, and, and we are addressing it as we find them.
I mean, I, I think it should be checked out before they get put in, so we.
Yeah, we can't put them in and then find out if they're too high, we can't keep doing that.
Then you're just jumping out to the fact, I think something should be looked at to see if there's.
Yeah, we're.
Is there more problems than you said?
We're looking at the rest of them that are going along here.
Well, I, I think it's time to look at it before you go along and before they start putting in higher depth.
What was wrong with the old elevation of the culverts?
Like I said, we, it was, basically it was a mistake on my part, I didn't look at it close enough to see that there was a little, a little channel through there that we didn't have survey shots in. That allowed it to flow through the culvert at that elevation, our existing ground total, just showed it matching the existing ground, and it looked like that culvert was, you know, half full of dirt, which, I guess the landowner over there told me it was. So we're trying to make it so it did, so it flowed freely, but at the same time, you know, I guess they could have jatted it out and made it a little bit. It was working better the way we had it than what it was before, but it didn't tell it the same elevation if they would have cleaned it. So, but like I said, we're, we've fixed that.
Well, I just wanted to, you guys know that there's, I think there's an issue.
Make, make sure you stay in touch with.
Yeah, just stop by and talk to me.
Yeah, I tried to get the last, yesterday afternoon, but.
Okay.
We, we, we don't wanna wait for a meeting to come up, we wanna address it right away, you know?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, just call my office.
Who's all on the site every day, Paul?
Uh, Greg Deelen, he was one, uh, he was the main inspector on Ramsey, or, we were driving the road last year.
Michael, are you aware of who that is?
You know, Rick?
No.
Okay, you know, are you driving, or?
I'm, I'm, a black, he's a little black doggy dog.
You can talk to anyone, they'll get a message to.
Yeah, we're, we're just talking to.
Is there a word for talking to one person versus another one?
Well, I just.
Yeah, no, we don't wanna.
I know my cousin, he'd talk to somebody about that culvert you're talking about.
Yeah.
Because I mentioned that to him, I said, you gotta go check that out.
Yeah.
But then there's one coming from Wakefield's into my property that's, just this morning it started running, as I drive by there and it's like, he's got a lot, there's water in that ditch for, since it started raining, and now it just started running through the culvert.
Right, and when we did the survey, it was the same way, we didn't, we didn't make it any worse by having that, but we're, we're actually gonna make it better by making a drain to the west on the north side of the road there.
Where you're gonna cut that ditch off too?
On the north side, yeah, and then, so then he'll have, he'll have that twenty-four inch one, and then also another way for it to get out with the monthly flows.
It's good to have input, but I want, I want you guys to look at that one we put in.
Over in the curve.
West, why did you, I don't see, you put that new one in, but then that wire is supposed to go west to the ditch. In the approach, you didn't, that doesn't look like that's marked for new culverts. And then, then that cuts to the, the curve of the county road, there's no culvert marked in that one, is that like?
Well, the curve's high.
You're not gonna do anything with that road? I was, I was, I was wondering.
Are you talking about the south curve?
The south curve.
Yeah, that, that's pretty high there, that's away from there.
That's, yeah, okay, I was wondering if that was just, that was just done.
Yeah, no, that drains away from there, right, yeah, that corner there.
What was the reasoning to move that culvert, is it lower there in that spot, or?
Where it ties into the existing ground it would be, and then we're putting, you know, we're redoing the, we're grading the ditches again to.
All right.
To make it flow out.
Well, I just wanna be, I just don't wanna get completed and we have a big problem.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want that either because.
We, I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna come back and fix it, it's crazy.
Well, and, and the reason we're doing those ditches in the, within the right ways on the north side of the road, is because if we had them dig through that over again and come, take the culvert out, it would, you know, it'll hold them up another several days. So we're, basically, it's.
I mean.
No, but I, I. And they're gonna get a better flow out in two culverts, you know.
So there's not two culverts there?
Not there, though.
A lot of. All right. That's a contractor's say, Paul? What's that contractor, getting along alright with everything, I mean it's?
Yeah, I mean, they they were good to work with on that as far as, you know.
Well, they wanna get it right too.
They wanna get it right, absolutely, I agree, yeah.
And, you know, and right now is a good time to for them to work on that kinda stuff because it's, you know, too wet to do much else. They can have a little V ditch when it's kind of wet out there before, you know, when they can go there. So they can clearly still get, you know, paid for the coven excavation, so I mean, I was glad that they've opted, accepted the bid price for it. For that work.
I talked to him yesterday and he said that uh, he's getting behind because of the weather.
Yeah, no, I, that's gonna be a struggle.
Was that supposed to get done this year totally or?
It was a hundred and twenty working days and we've had a lot of rains, so.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know. I mean conceivably, I guess from the start date to the completion date, we'll push it into the middle of October with no rain during the week, we can only work five days a week. So. I don't know what it'll take now.
Alright. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Jeff Cameron.
Yes.
Our extension.
Could I please have another extension for the contact mobile house?
He said the the contractor is on site.
Yeah.
He's uh, he's running under wet conditions and?
It took forever for that uh. Right on the north side, that helps for the frost to leave. Then he had other obligations and the rain has set in back, yeah. So it's kind of a mess, but he's on site now and.
What do you think, what do you think it's gonna take, another month?
Yeah, um. Now the mover has got a few jobs ahead of me too, so. Um. Can we go like August fifteenth maybe or? Just in case.
Well, let's make sure it's enough time, otherwise it was back here again.
Yeah.
Um, they won't be able to fill the hole till it freezes up right anyways, so.
So you're doing?
We wanna go on by that.
Yeah, before freezing.
Issue for August fifteenth, that would be a good deal for you?
Is that enough?
Oh yeah, it's plenty, I don't know, I'm just. Just in case of the mover or something, but I talked to him again this morning and he said that we plan to have time.
Have to try a lesser range for those.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to uh Jeff, yeah, August fifteenth.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carried. Thank you very much. Art McCormick is not available today.
Do you have some information on that though?
Um, basically she said she'd like to present it to the board on the, for Tuesday in August, cause she's busy calling. It's basically she's looking at different grants, but she wants to present it to you, so I don't wanna.
Well, we haven't had much to eat for itself or?
So she'd like to come in and talk to you guys, but.
Okay.
Bill Otis.
Sun. I bought some more sun. I might could take away one. Uh first off, I'd just like to say that we had our first ever outdoor four H achievement livestock show and it went very well with one exception. We weren't quite prepared enough and we had a beef get away from us and I definitely a couple miles less to there, but we got it rounded up, everything was good. But Commissioner Brown was out there, we actually had a lot of people, I think we had more people there this year than we've ever had. Yeah, I was very, very happy, the whole day went good. Uh there's a couple things we gotta work with, we gotta find some sun shelter for pigs, because if we continue, not if we continue, we're gonna continue with this. They're gonna need some some kind of shade, so we'll we'll figure that out as we go. But but anyway, I didn't hear anything negative, I thought it went very well. Um, we do, as Commissioner Olson knows, we need some sun for our, also for our landscape stuff, it's just getting loaded up with just off ends of disease pressure. Same thing in the field, you know, our small grains are looking good, we got barley and wheat is in the late boot. Or our corn and soybeans got a ways to go yet, we gotta, we need some sun and also for the cabbage, we need some sun for. And so as you can see, the word for the day is sun. And then what'll happen is they'll come out and they'll get hot and everybody complain. That's what'll happen, and then the last thing is, for the first time since I've been here, I'm actually gonna go take a true vacation, we gone for a couple weeks. I'm gonna continue to take phone calls during workdays, you know, they're all aware that they can call me at any time. Uh but I will not be here starting tomorrow through about the twentieth.
Yeah.
You have any questions?
Have fun.
I will tell you, I did get a phone call last night, eleven o'clock about a gladiola. My phone rings almost twenty-four seven.
They called.
Nope.
They should have been. It's only at eleven o'clock about a, whatever.
I asked her to call me this morning, you don't.
I think you should be.
Yeah, but that's how that's how open my phone is for people in my community that I don't call, I I even Sundays, I don't care.
They wait, yeah?
Pardon me?
They wait, yeah.
Last night, yes.
The the give me your phone number, I wanna start calling people.
Any questions? State there coming up, um. Oh, I understand there, it starts the eighteenth I think, yeah, seventeen, eighteenth. Personal comments, anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Ratslaw.
Well, we're still grinding our way out, trying to get things into the state, get the list done and somebody can do the abstract and get it sent into the state. Um, I see it's not up there, but it was on the agenda, I had a travel request.
Oh yeah. It's on one of them.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay. For the later, no.
No, it's right now.
Okay.
It's right now.
Um, it's for the annual conference this year in Sacramento. Um. Pretty valuable concert conference, but they bring in instructors and speakers for these that you can't get in North Dakota, so. I'm just requesting to go to the annual conference in. August twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh.
And uh before you're here?
Yeah.
Again. I've been going quite a while, though, or?
No, I've been going the last probably five years. I was the president of our association, so I was getting them to pay for it.
Oh.
For a few years and then the president couldn't go one year, so I was vice, so I got to go that year free.
You got any kind of areas that I know, you know, did you have you looked in work yet this year?
I looked into some of it, but with airlines and stuff changing, um. It, I got prices on airlines about six hundred dollars. Um, it's five hundred dollar registration for you to get into the conference. And um. Motel is about seven eighty.
That's after the state equalization?
Yeah. State equalization is the second Tuesday of August. And this is where you get vendors, that's where that's where I seen Vanguard the first time when we, I remember looking for appraisal software, they all set up booths at this conference, there's. Probably fifty booths set up of vendors. Software vendors and appraisal companies.
Have money here, but.
Yeah.
I'm a little long, you're into uh just to set up a little for the national convention?
Motion is a second. One second. Second. Roll call, please.
Brown? You said?
Aye.
Martin? Asap?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you. I'll be back in another half hour, so.
Okay. Stacy.
Good morning. Did uh, y'all get a copy when I wrote up, um? I'll just touch on a couple of the meetings that uh were involved with. Kramer was in town and we met out at the uh meaningful things for about two and a half hours. Touching on a lot of veterans issues, uh not so much pertaining to the state of North Dakota veterans, but more veterans in general, especially with the VA and the spot bike like it is. Uh, there's a pretty much a consensus that with what's going on with the National VA. The uh benefits are, is it's gonna open up things more for veterans, especially Vietnam veterans. So, um, it sounds bad news, but yet it's looking a little bit better for the veteran himself, so. That was uh pretty much a very informative, then we did a tour of the clinic. And we, it was uh, there were painting, uh it's, and I haven't heard this past week. But that week, uh most of the floor was done, painting was almost complete and they had ceiling talent, a few things to touch up in the ceiling. So the the structure itself is pretty much wrapped up, now it's just to set furniture and and get the people in there. We've also heard that the staff will be on site by July fifteenth with that a possible opening date. Well, not, nothing has been official yet. Uh Kramer did say that the twentieth of August was a dedication date. I questioned him to make sure that was a dedication, not an opening, and he had to backtrack to make sure, he reiterated that. That was dedication, that's when everybody's on recess and that's when all the dignitaries can show up. And it sounds like they wanna have a big uh hoop to do about it when they do have the dedication, so we'll have some fun then. Um, the other big item, uh met with the college last week. Uh, I'm still slated to be there one hour a week starting uh next week. And that'll be on a Wednesday after dinner, one o'clock till two o'clock. But what the college and Camp Crafton has uh, is going to initiate is a pilot program. The first of its type in the country where they're gonna have guard members coming to Camp Crafton for training. Which need touch up on their math and science capabilities. We get a lot of uh tenure plus in in the guard members who uh aren't really up on their math and science courses. So that's gonna uh bring a lot more veterans to the college and that's why they probably asked for me to be up there. Was to uh for the presence of the veterans. Uh, they're anticipating quite a bit more veterans using the college. And this is the first of its type in the whole country where the uh state colleges uh getting involved with guard members as just a refresher course for their. Their, what they need to do their job. So, uh, that's been, uh, what's been going on for me mostly in June. One thing I didn't, I I should have, um. When I itemized some of the things that I've been working on, one item I don't put in there that should have is uh. The burial requests, which we are now working, uh, in the past. The burial benefits for veterans were passed off onto the VFW. I don't know why, but now we'll be working strictly with the uh Gilbertsons especially, their eighty funeral home of a veteran in Ramsey County. The paperwork will be coming through this office here, it's uh, it's the way it's meant to be, it's supposed to be that way. And uh, so we'll be getting that accomplished, and we're already working on it. I'm already seeing where we get a lot of uh requests for uh families where veterans being buried in the area. And they've lived out of state for most of their lives, but they're, they were born here. So we're getting a lot of requests, uh, and it, you know, just adds a couple weeks to the process, but uh. We're getting involved with more of that also that way. And Gilbertsons is on board with this, they're, they're okay with everything there.
Stacy, uh social services, they, that wouldn't be the way to run a team to have a murder.
Not the burial benefits, vet- veterans burial benefits, uh, and it's basically the marker. The uh, the VA will supply a marker that states that the veteran served uh from whatever years, whatever branch of service. And then whatever else, um, one request was, uh, a gentleman had the nickname Pinky. They wanted that on his marker. So that's the kinda things that the, we'll do for the veteran. And then we get bronze granite marble markers and then we uh, usually work through the granite companies or the funeral homes and they'll place the marker where it needs to be. Yeah. That's all I got.
One question I heard on the radio yesterday with that, the remains they found of that lease?
Yep, Rockford, yeah. Uh, we got emails, they started early yesterday morning and they were uh concerned about the time that flight was getting in with the body and and or the remains and uh. Uh, and a lot of this, I'm a member of the Patriot Guard, but in this area, we don't see too much, but in Fargo, that's always uh. Uh, a request is to be there to help. And you seen the on TV last night or on the news, the American Legion has a large contingency for escorting and doing all that. And uh, so we seen emails going all the way from, you know, Fargo, back and forth to Eddie County and. And all of us were made aware of what was going on, so.
Sixty-four years.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know if you can try to hear it, but they follow the remains of a.
He was a medic, yeah.
A medic. Who was the worst battle of Korea, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Lost the most life.
Well, yeah, 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 the uh, every battle's bad, but. Yeah, when you get that kinda loss of life, yeah.
I listen to radio every single night, so. Anything else for Stacy today? Thank you, Stacy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin's up?
Hey, we'll start with the update, uh, update on our road projects, um. Ramsey County four by doing, they started clearing out the black dirt and uh. Culvert extensions. Of course, the rain is pushing them back too, but that's where that's at, so.
Time to get their borrow pit, wear mail stuff done too, and they're sort of stripping that. Just this week.
Who's been there again?
Hoist to the dirt work, nails the prime.
Nails the prime and Hoist and the dirt.
Yeah.
Anything else on Ramsey four? Uh, trucks route, I'll wait.
Okay, all right, we're just uh working on right away still, um, we got Steve Miller coming up from Ismark next week to meet the plant owners, he's one of our. Um, right away agents and uh. Guess we'll keep bugging away on that, uh, the one thing, one thing I did run into um last few days is that uh, on that curb parcel. Um, um, west side of it, we're, we're gonna buy the curb now too. Um, if we did that, it would push us over how much we can acquire through appraisal, waiver, valuation, we'd have, could actually have an appraisal. So I think we should hold off on that until, until we have funding to build that part and do that as a separate acquisition and just buy the. The the parcels that we need to build the current project. Just to, thanks to nice things. And then we pulled the right away lines in and narrowed up the ditch over by Gary Johnson, so I think he's happy now. We're, we're able to accommodate his requests, I'm working with utilities, um, NOHAC, Otter Tail. And DTC and the, and the college has a power line running, bagging all through the intersection by Johnson's there too, so it's kind of a. Fun area to work in, but we're gonna figure it out.
Any questions on that project? Ramsey eight, I think they did some staking work out there or something?
Yeah, I guess our guy is stake the, stake the project and populate the center lines and those, kinda got a little bit of a slow start this year with as far as actual construction goals, so. Got a bit busy doing that kinda thing, um, talked to Knife River, they're gonna give us a price for replacing that second culvert. Um, they haven't got back to me with an actual price for it yet. They said they wouldn't be able to do the dirt work till the end of July and then be paving in August. But the dirt work is just the two culvert replacements. So that's on Knife River, let's move in.
Um Ramsey nine, that's close his job, but he's still, he's got two crews putting in culverts and as soon as he gets done putting in culverts. He'll free up one of those crews to start on night. So nothing new there, nothing's progressing there till he gets those culverts done. And then Ramsey ten? I guess.
I guess we've been discussing most of that, but.
Most of that, still putting in culverts.
Yeah, they said they're trying to get all the, the dirt built. Yeah, they said they're trying to get all the, the dirt built out just around where the culverts go in. And, uh, in, on the water now and put those in before they really haul on the grade. That way they're out of the way and have a few field fillings in the top of the whole culvert excavation. And they won't have some that's just, you know, dips. There won't be so much sediment that are like they're approaching it the right way, as far as that goes.
So that's pretty much it for updates, anybody got any questions on those projects?
How many days have they used on ten so far?
Um, I'm sure off hand it wasn't great, you know. Probably around twenty, I guess, like, I think they're only at sixteen a week ago, a few days of rain.
And we've got a hundred and twenty days aside for the.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty working days. So, so yeah, like the day where it's, you know, it rained yesterday, but then it rained a little bit this one, but it's still too wet to work, so we don't count that.
I mean. Do we have a plan that just don't work, I mean, we don't have enough days to make?
Well, it's a hundred and twenty working days, so I mean, it could easily carry it the next season if it continues to be like this. But, you know, they have a, I guess they're temporary gravel to, you know, to carry it through if they get to a certain point. And it, it sounds like, you know, Close wants to get the east mile done first, which doesn't have much to build going on. And, and then get some gravel on that, which makes sense for us too. But, you know, it'll be easy to drive on.
Yeah, it's weather can't hang on forever, can it?
No.
Won't be much paper up in the left.
Um, they'll be able to make around just seven.
Well, they'll be able to bring in seven tomorrow at one. I guess we need to award that, it's a contract, it takes to get started before our next meeting. We may have to call a special meeting, but I don't anticipate that, so we'll have the results at the next meeting.
Roll beans tomorrow?
At one o'clock right here.
What's expected cost on that?
Fifty, fifty thousand, fifty-five.
You have to take care of that rock a little pretty good then.
Well, it's just that one short section by the, uh, substation.
But the rest of it's here, there, Jim.
Oh, yeah.
I, I haven't.
I haven't since all the rain either, but.
I went down the last week and, uh, right, the very far west end has had some pretty serious issues there, but.
Right, there were.
Water was going over four yesterday, so.
All salted?
Okay, what's on, or I suppose that one, no others?
Wait, by the lake crossing or that second one?
Like, lake.
The other one was fine.
We don't even get that, that one, we don't get that four itself.
Was it Washington though? Was it?
Is that still for the later one or anything more?
So the contractors that are all on that road, probably? Both of them were all a year, a week or so ago.
Yeah.
I see them on the, on the pit too and on the down there. We'll have to take a look at it.
Yeah, once the swim quits today and we'll look at it, then I can talk to them and see if they'll help.
I didn't see them all yesterday, but. Thank you for the word of it, I guess.
They're not, right.
I didn't see the fishermen on there, so. Wash them over.
They were there, they just blew away.
You have to dodge them, but.
Yeah, the contractors have finished our hot mix ore lays and our Chippewa job, we, uh, paid the bill for that Chippewa job. Uh, we just need to get the lines painted on, maybe three. And that's gonna cost roughly twenty thousand. It's hard to estimate though, the painting lines, because they change every year, but that's a ballpark, twenty thousand. I don't feel much motion on that, or it's part of the project?
Part of the project.
Yeah, it shouldn't be part of the project.
And then you do that once before on?
Yeah, it's, you know, he's got a sweep it and weather won't let him sweep it. They, I did call the painter and he's got other projects in the area, so it'll get done quickly, but. Well, related again.
Are they putting the bunks in, back there?
Uh, no.
No bunks on that one. Eight little bunks.
Keep waking you up when you're driving.
I know.
Start having these now and hit them, wakes you up.
Gets you up.
Terrible.
Uh, the only other thing, Steve, can you bring up Freezone again? Got a request from Helen Carlson. Some residents that live out in Freezone wanna vacate a street. And I assume it's because of the two mile jurisdiction, oh, the city gets involved.
We'll show you where it's at on the map.
They, they're asking if we have any comments as far as vacating the street? That's this little section right, right through here, this is actually dedicated at four road. This section. And this will continue through here. If you're familiar with this, this is really steep through here, so I think it'll be developed. They're asking if we have any comments as far as closing that section of road.
Oh, that's a bad way to end it.
No, no section line, or something, but.
It's a dedicated road.
Yep, on the platform, it's a dedicated.
Uh, uh, wouldn't that come under township?
It does, but they're, they're asking if we have any comments is all. If we wanna make comments, well, where are the other? Not that it's up to us, they're just looking for comments.
Is that Rainey's bolt himself on the north, right there?
No, no. What do you think?
He'll never put that street through.
They would never put a street through there, that's.
In fact, check to see who the property owners are on both sides of that one street, just to see.
Didn't they just be quite in Catholic Hinkin'?
The Higgins was one of the ones that requested it and it was on the north side, that's a slight amount.
Yeah, that's a slight amount.
Who, who's the other one, just on the north side of that Higgins there, right at the joint there? Right, right there.
That, that's the street, it's dedicated as a street, so it's not a, nobody owns it.
Oh, nobody owns it?
Right.
So, do you think that's why they wanted to clean it, so they could buy it?
No, no, no.
They wouldn't buy it.
What comes up if you click on it?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No.
Uh, it's probably a. You know, it could, could probably be an addition to that other piece of property that would make it multiple.
Well, that's possible. Right now, the city is just asking if we have comments on it.
It's probably a good thing not to be commenting on when it's not under our jurisdiction at all.
That's what I can say, it's just no comments.
Yeah.
We, it's none of our business.
We have our own business.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can find several problems to work on.
That's all I have.
Ready to go? I had to take it, they're not ready, what's that? We're here almost to the end.
Almost to the end, exactly.
Oh, okay, so, uh, we pick like, we can take five. Bring them back to order.
Uh, under new business, Ramsey County Airport Authority Board.
Bill's term is up at the end of June.
Are you interested in continuing?
Who's doing it?
Oh, Bill.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Say aye, both same sign. Bill is still on there. Approves surplus list for July fifteenth sale.
Is it on here?
Yep.
Yep, it should be.
Oh.
The fourteenth is the date of the, when you have to have bids.
Bids, so.
But it is fifteen, did you find it or not?
Oh, I'm surprised.
You have to have a bid. Oh, no, maybe it's, uh, before the end, I'm sorry.
It has to be, my, my date is on fourteen.
There's, it's not in our package?
There should've been, did you get one?
I'm sure.
Page nine.
And hand them in.
Oh, it's over on the side there, Scott.
Oh. You sure we got a bid? I didn't ask that.
Well, if, if somebody wants.
Yeah, nobody wanted, nobody had.
But if somebody bids on it and you don't have a bid on, you can't have your bid.
You can, right.
And where we have a, I think we're gonna decide that we're, it's not one cent, a raise.
What's that?
Remember last time? The guy bid one cent.
One cent, yeah, yeah.
I think we need to decide when we start.
Have minimum bid, dollar on the raise.
Raise, dollars, dollar.
Yeah, dollar raise, I'm gonna make a motion, we do that.
Or five dollars.
About five.
Yeah, I think five.
Maybe five, maybe they're.
Or worth five.
Well, some of that stuff isn't worth five dollars.
The purchase.
I'd rather.
So are you for the new list too?
Yeah, I'll give them the list and then say a one dollar raise. Minimum one dollar rate.
Why don't we just do this after the meeting?
Um, no.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, both same sign, both agree.
Let's move on that component ten. Just all.
I do have a question on that car though.
Okay.
Are we getting enough money for these cars or should we start putting some minimal? You know, we did very well that time we put the minimal on that Mercedes. I'm just wondering if we should put a minimal on the car.
Well, that's great, Conrad dropped the scale, it's not Mercedes.
Yeah, we kept it for, well, ten years, yeah. I think we kept it ten years or twelve years and we did not surplus it. What was the minimum, a thousand, I think, wasn't it?
What, uh, tell me what the situation is with, uh, Kristen's vehicle.
Okay, she, it's all ready for her, so she's got it. The only thing is the plates need to be put on, and Steve's got those.
I, I, no, but I need her whole one.
Oh, Steve took that one in swap of the, um, Dodge Charger.
Okay.
Which the Dodge Charger must be eleven, I think it's eleven. But you see it sitting out here, it's in very good shape. And I think, Kevin, did you guys take the stripes off and do some other stuff on it or?
Yeah.
Got it all fixed up or?
Yeah, she's got a radio, a two-way radio.
Yeah. She had it cleaned inside out to buy gas. So it's in the shape, she took it for a drive on Friday, it's really nice. The only thing is the plate needs to be put on. I don't know how good a shape this Crown Victoria is.
It's a little rough. It's got big folds on it, headliner, uh, doesn't have the center console, the car, the engine, the seats are.
Okay, it's rougher than.
Well, this one's pretty rough, yeah.
If you notice Jennifer was driving it, she was like.
Well, I just know some of them have been in pretty good shape and they're paying for five hundred dollars and it's like, we're giving away. They can't buy any cars for five hundred dollars.
How much would, how many miles does this have on?
Hundred twenty, somewhere between hundred and hundred twenty.
But then if you don't get a minimum bid, you're gonna sit on it for a year? It's on the, today.
Does it last a little bit? Yeah.
Is that what we're gonna do, the minimum bid?
No, I was just, I was just.
How are you gonna do it?
Well, it's not, it's, it's not.
Well, we have the right to refuse any and all bids, right?
Yes.
Well, we opt out of the pieces.
We don't have that stated though, do we? Do we have a stated?
If, no, we don't, it is stated in here that, um, uh, that we're.
There's right accepted, you know.
Well, we'd have to, I said beforehand.
What we, what we like to see?
Yeah, we can't just, in the, at the time of the sale. No, I won't take so many out of you, I won't.
It's just, uh, I mean, the car would crush the, the hundred bucks. Should at least get scrapped out of the park.
Why is it so bad on the inside?
I don't know, Ross's car, but that, that doesn't, I'm not saying.
I heard that.
She couldn't take the pressure.
Okay, anything else with that then? Election discussion.
Um, the reason I put that on the agenda, I was approached by the City of Devils Lake, Terry Johnston. To hold a special election on the Wellness Convention Center. And they wanna hold it in October, and our election is November fourth. I am not in favor of holding theirs due to the fact that it would be chaos in our office, just enough two different ballots. Um, we can't handle it. So I'm, it's up to us and I, Lonnie and I reviewed the contract. And the contract does not say that we have to handle it unless they hold at the same time as ours. So I need just you guys' approval, so I can contact Terry at the city and tell them. I'm the auditor, I'm the election official, so I can decide, but I wanna make sure the board, the boards on, agree with me before I call them.
I'll answer this question then. The city can't just run their own election?
They can.
The county district does.
Yeah.
They can do that, they can't.
Yeah.
And I think it would be a lot better. And I mean, if they call us soon enough, they can have it over in the memorial building and their election date. What date are they deciding, October?
I don't know, I'll find out today at two o'clock.
I'm sure the last meeting, yeah.
Why do they wanna hold it then instead of the other ones?
I don't know, I'm not on that committee.
Doesn't it just cost some extra money?
Yes.
I made a motion that the city, I think, so election.
And the motions are second.
Is there a, uh? Dude, they don't have to have a mail out, do they?
Yes, they do.
They have to have that.
They have to, they have it the same way as any other, as any other election.
It has to be.
And actually, anybody that checked the cards that said all statewide elections. They need to get the copy of those and send out to everybody that's on those comments, that's what they.
Are they aware of that?
That's in the city limits.
I, I emailed Terry, I wanted to get confirmation from the Secretary of State, and I emailed Terry.
Well, and, and on a, on another note, and Betty pointed this out to me, it's very confusing to people to get these two different ballots. And what they, a lot of people do, especially older people who wanna save the forty-six cents, they put them both in the same one. And then if it comes into the county, they don't open it until November fourth. And it's not, their, their ballot is not employed. So it's really in the city's best interest to do it themselves.
Is there anything that you can do to assist them as far as like giving them something, um, electronically that they can use for a, a mail out?
Yep.
You know, all their information and stuff like that, or this, this.
Cause they have all the people within the city.
Give them a little bit of advice on it.
Yeah.
We can print them out of a report that the ones that checked all statewide elections, that they will have to send out the opt-in to.
And some will help them with that.
Be an advice.
We can send out the print.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they just have to be sent to code if they so choose to have it in October. I, my advice to them would be to hold it November fourth, cause it'll be on our big ballot, but that's up to the committee.
I think their, their, um.
What are the meetings we can run up?
Today. Well, the executive board is meeting today and then we'll have the website meeting tomorrow. The regular website meeting. More like, I don't know. Um.
The executive board meets?
The exec board meets today at two and then the convention center.
At the city?
Center board, yeah, no, at the, at the, um, table. And then the, um, convention center committee meets tomorrow at the city. And, and you know, maybe we should, can we hold off on doing anything until we need again as a committee? Whether, um, making any motions to make it separate or whatever, cause maybe we can, you know, maybe after talking about it again. They, and talking, I think Oddney is the one that, that recommended that it be separate.
Who's Oddney, that's a.
That's the, um, group that.
Wanted to do a survey?
That does a survey.
Aye, yep.
So maybe we should meet again, you know, allow us to meet again and table this until the, the meeting on the fifteenth. Would that, that wouldn't be pushing anything as far as dates or anything?
Just as long as everybody knows, uh, we really don't wanna handle it because.
Right. If it's on a, if it's on a, and I'm qualified by saying we don't wanna handle it if it's separate.
Right. Otherwise, if it's on our big ballot in November, we can handle it, no problem. So.
Okay.
Cause it'll part, be part of the big ballot, it'll be just back on the backboard, it'll have city measure.
Yep.
Or city, whatever they wanna call it. And I, the city had the special election in November when they had the no smoking. And I, that passed with big numbers, so I, I guess I'm not too sure why they wanna have it separate except.
Well, it's gotta be sixty percent approval, right?
No, no, fifty-one.
Fifty, only fifty-one.
Yeah, they're still, it's still. But, okay, so do you wanna withdraw your motion now?
Well, unless it stays on, uh, if they do, see what they have to say.
Yeah, we still have.
Let's see what they have to say.
Okay, then we'll withdraw for now.
My motion table.
Okay.
Okay. Here.
Oh, I saw it, now, okay.
Mister Chairman, I've got one thing I'd like to bring up on unfinished business. Uh, I was questioned by the mayor in Edinburgh when something's gonna get done with that Taylor House there, we had a guy that was gonna come and get it.
Can, can we come back to that?
Oh, 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 okay, I didn't, yeah, no, that's fine.
Mister Chairman, a motion second on the.
Yeah, the motion is coming back and I'm tableing the, uh, election discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Okay, here you go. Now, let's go to the hearing on the basement.
I'm not sure if they've got a copy of this, you probably got the abatement application, but this is the exemption form that, that you fill out, that, that they were dealing with. And that they excuse that one, we can put out some information. Is there anybody here? I don't think representing, uh, Mister Arden, but, um, there's a little fire starting over these farm residence exemptions and I thought to get you guys informed on them. This is the application that people need to fill out to get their home exempted if we're taxing it or, and in this case, this one was being taxed, but, um, and there was some people in, in this township were questioning this one because this is the third house that this gentleman has that's exempt. He also has a house to freeze on, so.
Is that exempt too, the one in the freezer?
No, no, it has to be on the farm. And that's why I thought we should go through, and really it's the actual farm category that I'd like to go through. This is what qualifies you to, for a farm residence exemption. It's gotta be located on ten acres or more that are farmed by the occupant. Um, major portion of your time has to be devoted to farming. Your annual net income from farming has to be fifty percent or more of your total income, and that includes your spouse, so if a husband and wife are, if the wife is working outside the home full-time and the husband sells seed or does custom combing or anything, if you make over forty thousand, I guess that's the, um, it's fifty percent, but also forty thousand maximum that you can make from non-farm. So that's really the first test, I guess, if the, the husband and wife make over forty thousand, non-farm, you have to tax your house. And that's, that's where that stops, but I think it's when somebody has more than one house exempt as well, maybe. But in this case, it's a farm laborer. He has a laborer living in this house. And I think he lives in another house and, um, his son lives in one of the other houses and I think the one in the freezer is just rented out, so. If that's the case.
The one in the freezer is a question, I mean, it's, it's getting taxed, right?
It's getting taxed.
Right.
So does this stand back in this Ed Walters business at all?
Well, that's, that, this is the same thing that he was, that he applied for, he didn't qualify and then he set himself up and he qualified. And that, that has surfaced recently to that one. So that's why I say there's a small fire starting that I'd like, I just, you guys should be informed. Um, this is what qualifies for farm residence exemption.
And to go back to that just a little bit and explain it to you, the township is upset about this Ed Walters property north of the mobile home park that I was asking about, having that road, um, maintained. Um, the township people are, are upset because.
What township? Minawagan?
North Creel, this is Minawagan, but, 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 but that's where the other one came in. The man owns a farm in, um, Toner County and his farm home up there is exempt. He's retired and he lives on the end of whatever, what's the name of that road? Eleanor Road. He lives on the end of Eleanor Road. Well, he fought and fought to be tax exempt there as well. Because he claims that that's farmland, not that he farms any of it, but he, he claims that it's farmland. And so he is tax exempt there and that's what's got the township board in North Creel up in arms, and I think we're gonna see more of it.
Like, considering being farmed, it's gotta be killed, going crop, livestock there, that.
I would guess.
But, but Ed Walters doesn't have any of that.
Well, it's just gonna announce it.
Farmed by the, you know, the criteria there is the residence located on a track, continuous track, so by land containing ten or more acres farmed by the occupant, that would be the question. Farming can be any sort of practice, in my estimation, till, can be aid, cause, you know, we do that, and for that matter, even gardening, I suppose. It's, um, raising crops or grazing farm animals is, is the definition.
And it'd be an aid with quality.
Oh, yes. And that's what happened. Mister Walters actually blocked that whole corner there, so he's got enough to farm and he actually put on a requirement, started farming, I think. And that's how he got it exempted. And, and it, he, and that, that's a, that was a discussion at the township equalization meeting that he came to, um, because after, it was just a bad timing because as soon as he got his house exempted, then he was complaining about the road.
And it's a township road.
Nope.
I, I'm not sure what.
It was needed to the township, but the township claims that they didn't accept it.
Is it in their minutes?
Is it a section line?
Nope.
It's not in their minutes?
They won't give me the minutes.
And that's a whole separate issue.
That's an issue, but it's, but that's what's behind it, you know?
Well, I, I think one of the big keys here that's gonna help some is that the income part has to be done off. I've got twenty-nine, thirty acres on my place, yeah, I've got livestock on there, I can aid part of it. But the income factor, well, except I make such huge, I'm just money off the horses, you know that. But, but I'm really not, don't have any income off of it, so my house is not tax exempt.
Where, where the problem is, is, I mean, you can make a million dollars farming. But if you and your wife make over forty thousand and non-farm, you're running your back hole and she has a job in Edmar. If you make over forty thousand and non-farm, it doesn't matter how much you farm, you have to pay on your house.
Oh, I thought it's lo, I thought as long as your farm brought in over half, they could, oh, okay, that was the finest concept.
Well, that's why I want you guys to be informed because there's, there's a misunderstanding out there about farm residence exemption and it's starting to spread. You know, if you, it, it's going around. I'm getting, Beth and I are getting questioned more and more on this than we ever have.
Well, people come in and they say, well, you know, he farms twenty quarters, but his wife is an RN and she makes seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Why are they tax exempt? Why is their home tax exempt? It shouldn't be.
And that's why a lot of the counties now have went to, they send one of these out every year. If you're not paying on your house, you happen to sign one of these, just like senior citizens or anybody else that wants their house taxed. You, um, you have to fill one of these out or you get taxed. I don't really wanna do that, but I mean, that's, that's what I know Nelson County did a few years ago and they picked up a hundred homes that showed them paying taxes.
Well, I think you're getting into a time more and more where both the husband and wife are working and it's just getting to my work. Lonnie concerns, I don't know, forty thousand.
Anyway, I think, you know, no doubt this qualifies for the farm labor exemption. Um, he's going back twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. He defiled this after the equalization meeting that the township had this year. So he, he's asking actually for three years, two years to be paid back and then this year to be exempted.
And that's legitimate?
Yeah.
Yep, as long as he gets, the twelve qualifies until November, so, or is this different than?
No, it's the same.
It's the same thing.
Remember first year when the year that the tax became the only one sold, the twelve tax became the only one in thirteen, so you got till November of fourteen to file.
It's still back and asked before that, did it, right?
It's roughly fifty thousand dollars in value. Five hundred bucks a year, approximately.
It's down to ten dollars a thousand now?
No, it's a drop.
And it's very good.
These people don't look at their tax statements, they all must have seen it went down this last year, right?
I don't know.
Property taxes?
No.
Substantially, they went down. Well, it's not, if he qualifies, qualifies.
Exactly.
Well, I, yeah, I agree with you, Bill, I can read the paper and everything, I understand the law, but I mean.
I, I talked to.
Five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
I talked to him, he didn't realize that farm laborer homes would be exempt. He knew his was. He didn't know that he could have a laborer exempt, he heard it somewhere.
Well, just so the laborer doesn't have a wife that earns more than fifty percent of the income.
The laborer is a woman.
Oh.
What matters?
Well, that doesn't mean you can't avoid.
Right, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry.
We have no.
We have the group, right?
Yes.
Voodoo.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same side.
Do you wanna include the fourteen in this too, Jerry?
Yeah. Yeah, and the application actually says fourteen.
Okay.
Motion carried.
Asked at one of the state meetings or schools that I went to when I was working with Terry and I said, you know, why is that? North Dakota's the only state union that has a farm residence exemption anymore and he said, we never bite the hand that feeds you. And, uh, so I said, so what, uh, how do we butt up against this number all the time and come out, you know, and make it work? And so what they started doing in the legislative process is to raise that number from something and now it's up to forty. And I don't doubt if it comes up again, it brings it to fifty or something like that too, because, uh, because of what's happening in North Dakota. On the other side of the coin, there's a strong movement because of so many legislators and stuff like that are now non-farmers. That, uh, that, that they're trying to end the farm residence exemption. I don't think it'll ever happen to you.
Well, I, I don't know, it's getting close, I think, but I don't think, I don't know that that forty thousand dollar thing will come up to be a big issue because they don't wanna raise a big issue about this exemption at all and lose it.
With the exemption at all.
And lose it all, I mean.
So, it, it is every legislative session, though, it comes up about losing it, maybe somebody's trying to take it away.
We were actually asked, uh, after two thousand and three or something like that, who to walk with values on, on big sound property, and, and he said, yeah, all right.
Don't get right on that, huh?
Yeah.
Approve pledge of assets and stop payment of checks.
I don't know. I don't think it is. I'm doing it.
Oh, he, he did it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed same side, motion carried.
Thank you.
Approve pledge of assets and stop payment of checks.
And then you stop the money check?
So, two. Two.
Two, it should be on your notebook.
Yeah.
The motion is our second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side, motion carried.
Um, we should have these as separate, separate motions because of the assets, should be separate from the stop payment checks.
Oh, oh.
So.
All the primary assets.
Okay, there's motions at the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed same side, motion carried.
Thank you.
I'm very tired.
That's okay.
Unfinished business, portfolios.
Uh, no, I'm back to your, yeah. Commissioner Brown said that you've, you've got somebody that is interested in that.
I think I do.
Or we have a trailer home?
Yeah.
I gotta check it out again.
Okay, you can check it out and then if you get that, is it okay if, if we can do it, can you just get back to me and can I just?
I'm all for that.
I just need to get it done. I, I do have to get back to the city board and tell them that, you know, yeah, we, we've had several people that were and then they don't.
Well, let me check this out.
Yeah, yeah.
It sounded like they would've went the next day. And I couldn't get you on the phone, I didn't know what they'd done with it.
Yeah.
I thought they were just gone. Let me check this out. It sounded like you were going anywhere.
Everybody's okay with those, just.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Portfolio, Scott.
The church apartment, everything seems to be going as well, it's gonna go, that's all I got.
Ed. Quiet.
Hi, Tom. I, social service is good, senior male insurance is good.
They don't like napkins instead of, place mats like their meals.
Where?
Finger meals. They, they're trying to cut.
Do you know more about it than you?
They're trying to cut costs so they no longer have place mats with their meals. So now they take a half, a napkin and fold it out in half and that's it. My mother, her place.
Oh.
She, she thinks that's pretty chintzy.
Social services in the office. WMA. Oh, one other thing, social services, they were trying to change the meetings for Toner and Ramsey County. At the present time, it's four.
Four in Toner and eight in Ramsey. We're kinda chafing at that.
They've got thirteen percent of the budget, so you might get.
I don't think it was very well received last meeting by the other half, but.
Leave it, I don't know. Think you'll remember, I guess.
Also, they lost another, long-term, they lost a long-term employee.
Oh, yeah.
She's going to work for the school system instead.
Her daughter, no.
Three babies.
She doesn't stay home part-time, huh?
She doesn't stay home part-time with her kids. No, it's surprising to me enough the burn rate of social services is not very high. I mean, that really surprises me, those people are seriously dedicated.
It's true, it's benefits.
Absolutely.
Pay has been bumped up, so. Better try to hang on to people.
But hiring qualified social workers in North Dakota is a real trial.
Especially out here. Part of the grab work is my, my, I think I'll find the application. I think that'd be James, I'll get, you know, national work. They can, they can open any grab when you get one, you know, when you get an application. Bill. Airport, we have our open house, our grand opening out there, that's real well. I have to apologize to Mark, I told him that the plane was probably full, but it isn't. I guess the reason why they're having issues with the rates is because they, they just can't, I guess, it's, uh, they feel that's a decent fare going to Denver and back is four hundred dollars, but, uh, if you go out a little bit farther out, on the short term, they bump it because if they, 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 they need to try to make some money on that plane, they can't give them all away for two, two fifteen or whatever. If you go out a little ways like.
You gotta far them for a hundred and twenty, that's quite a difference.
If you go to, uh, out to August or September. But, well, there.
But, well, they're cheap on Wednesdays.
Okay.
You gotta go Wednesday to Wednesday if you're going to Denver.
Yeah.
If, if you want a cheap flight.
And uh, um, and if you go on United's site instead of the Sky West, it, it seems to be different too.
Yeah, and I don't want to scum that up.
So, I know I, and, but it will, the, the guards are gonna start using it and then it, you know, they'll, they've got fifteen hundred people coming before the end of the season here, so. It'll, it'll pack here more. I did go out, I had to do some work on that for, they had a South African concert or something down in Denver. And a lot of the people from here that wanted to go down there called and asked me to see if I could give them better flight tickets and stuff like that, and they couldn't on short term. I know I told you that it's probably, you know, sitting there. They're running about fifteen or twenty percent of the whole thing.
Yeah. If you're able to have the building to.
So we're working on it though. We're, we're working with them, we talked to them at the, um, at the open house. We met with the regional directors and stuff of Sky West, we brought that up. Maybe if they could, like you said, lower it, it would place so many people on the plane, make our numbers look better and their numbers look better as well.
Yeah, makes the numbers look a lot better, so.
So, thanks for bringing it up, I did some checking on it. LEC, we're, we're working on problems or whatever out there, um, they're fully staffed now, so. It's a schooling issue now, trying to get people to go to school, get to school, and we're gonna be out and meeting again tomorrow, go over some numbers and stuff and. And I know it's a lot of issues that, if anybody wants to put input in on that, that's, you're welcome. It's just a lot of issues, so.
Do they have that schooling, Bill, do they? If they get enough people, can they have it, or is it just at certain times of year?
They got too many people, that's why they can't, they can't have anymore. And, and so we're trying to get, uh, we have the judge writing letters and we're writing letters ourselves. And trying to get them to put on more schooling or send somebody here that can cover a lot of bases and keep our people so personal. We've got two people going here in the next week or two and that'll help out, but uh. When it comes down to juveniles, it's looking like it's probably gonna be in that two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollar a day range. And all the information that we're getting back from other agencies in the state say that they can't afford to do it either. It's, it's, it's a statewide problem. There's only three places in the state that are handling juveniles right now. None of them are actually in compliance with FREA, which has to come into effect by fifteenth of August, and that's another reason why. You know, you, you got all these staffing problems and stuff, so.
You're talking about long-term juveniles, right?
Well, we're talking about all juveniles are gonna have to be under FREA.
But I mean, only three agencies in the state handle long-term juveniles, is that correct?
Juveniles at all. Fargo or Katz County or whatever handles juveniles, they uh, they have an average of seventeen. And they have twelve or thirteen people on staff to do that. Grand Forks got some juvenile facilities, they of course handle juveniles, and they're taking, you know, juveniles from Oliver, and it's one of them out in the western part of the state that takes some juveniles, but. We wrote to all of them and asked them how they were doing with it, how it works, and how it's been working out for them. They all say it's a, it's the biggest challenge to take on, so. In the short term, I think we're gonna have to start looking at how we handle, and if there was any way that we can take. The juveniles that get into trouble if they're not irate or they're not a problem, or um. If they're not out of hand, if it's just for drinking or for something that, you know, like, how, how else can we handle them so they don't have to go to Grand Forks, come back and go back, back to Grand Forks again? We're gonna need some cooperation, and we're talking about that. Is there another place that they can be, is, you know, off-site, is, can we use the attendant care people and maybe train to take care of these people? There's lots of things that we're looking into because with this twenty-four seven program that's going on, this SCRAM stuff. We're gonna talk about it at a Northeast County Commission Association meeting because it's such a big issue right now that it's overwhelming the RRC staff and.
RRC is reentry?
Reentry Residential Reentry Center, Rob Johnson from the Residential Reentry Center is actually handling that for the Sheriff's Department. And uh, and he's, he's got seventeen people on bracelets and they're starting to walk away with the bracelets, they're not paying their fines, they're not paying their. So, becoming auditing and some kind of a nightmare, and those bills will come back to Ramsey County, if those are Ramsey County SCRAM person. And we actually have one bracelet that's lost right now, and that's seventeen hundred dollars or twelve hundred dollars or something like that, that, you know, who pays for that? So, if, all these issues are starting to come up and, and how do we deal with them? We, we need to give Rob some relief, he, it isn't his job, we've just been doing it as a courtesy and uh.
It isn't his job to what?
To do those SCRAMs.
That's kind of.
Twenty-four seven, that by century code is on the Sheriff's Department. So, we told the Sheriff's Department that we would do that for them, but we're gonna need them to help us too, and so they've been doing the transports and stuff like that, but it's causing trouble everywhere. And we need to take a look at all of it and try to figure out how we're gonna solve. It's just not just juveniles that's an issue there, it's lots of other things that are becoming issues in law enforcement communities and.
You know, this is statewide problem, how come our state legislatures aren't trying, trying to do something?
It's just come on everybody so fast, when the government shut down a year ago or a year and a half ago or whatever, they came back with new rules. And it, and by the time everybody's reacting to these new rules and regulations or things that they're not gonna do anymore. They uh, it's caused all these trouble, all this trouble, so this legislative session will address a lot of these things that we need to bring them forward. That's why we're gonna bring them to our Northeast County Commission Association meeting so that we can go forward with the united front to the association of counties and have them. Lobby for legislation to get, to get these, these are mandates that are being brought down by either the feds or the state. But it costs the people a lot of money.
Yeah, the, the state realizes we have a problem, it's just funny that they haven't tried to help.
They, they can't do anything when they're not in session.
No, but it's been going on when they were in session.
What goes on is the state legislature passed along mandating, uh, for example, somebody charged with DUI based on twenty-four seven, which means they have to show up at the sheriff's office. At seven AM and seven PM with a dollar in hand and blow in a machine, and if they're positive, they go back to jail for violating the terms of bail. However, when you get somebody who's lost their license or has never had a license and they live thirty miles away, how reasonable is it to expect them to be able to come in to Devil's Lake at seven in the morning and seven PM again? So that's where they're authorizing SCRAM bracelets, where it's around the ankle, it senses alcohol usage, and they come in once and we can download it. And if they're positive, then they go to jail for violating the law. Well, the state mandate says upon the counties, but they never passed any sort of pen, not any.
Right.
To support the counties in this state mandate, yet another unfunded mandate. So, that's where the law enforcement centers come into play, since they've got people that, that work with the SCRAM bracelet to, to do that. Uh, and then we also use the, you know, oftentimes people are released from jail on drug testing, while rather than having everybody go pee in a cup at the sheriff's office. We use a community service worker for that, which allows our sheriff's office to be doing other things like transporting.
Does the counties, do they gotta pay for the bracelets, or does the state pay for them anyways?
Well, the court will try to order them to pay for all bracelets, but they have as much success.
Yeah.
With that is you get them to pay fines and restitution, their administrative fees and all the other things that they don't pay.
Well, and it's such a catch twenty-two because, yeah, they wanna be out of jail and they wanna be on the bracelet, but they, if they're not. If they don't pay for the bracelet and they, and they have to go to jail, it costs the county more money to have them in jail than to have them on the bracelet. So it's just, it's a total catch twenty-two.
Yeah, our, our state legislature didn't.
Well, and then, my other states have laws that say, you want this bracelet, you're paying for it, the county's not paying for it, you are.
But our state does have the funds right now that.
Oh, absolutely.
To do it, you know.
But, and these are states that don't have funds.
Yeah.
And I've looked at.
Right.
I've looked at all the surrounding states and they all, they all perform differently than North Dakota.
Yeah.
I would think it's a gesture, but the uh. Set up a day to meet with our legislators and for the purpose and have money there. And uh, just for the purpose of asking some of this over and putting over our concerns. And that we want them to address in our next legislative session, and I would say we shouldn't wait too long because there was a way to get into the real busy season. I would suggest we try to do it this month.
James Wang is gonna come to the Northeast County Commission Association.
That's fine, that's fine, we can talk to our legislators in our district.
He's, he's gonna be putting up on the front to go to the legislative.
No, we should talk to him ourselves.
Well, and I think, and on that same theme, we should probably invite the legislators from the surrounding areas like from District Twenty-three because Benson County is heavily involved in this.
Well, let's start with, just random, let's worry about Ramsey County first, let's take care of that.
Well, yeah, but from a law enforcement center standpoint.
Well, another suggestion I had was that you should probably meet with the entire commission from the five counties. That are all the law enforcement center and get them to understand our concerns. I don't think our concerns as a commission have been getting related, related back to them. Back to their full commissions?
Mm-hmm, I don't think so either.
I don't think they understand who's putting the bill for that law enforcement center, a large share of it.
It's um, and that's the reason why I asked them to redo their budget cycles so it matches up with the counties, so the counties can see how this is all gonna work out. That's, like I said before, the nine-one-one.
How do you think they know about, who puts the bill for this law enforcement center?
They, they pay, they'll disciple you.
Nothing compared to what Ramsey County.
But it's nothing compared to what Benson and Ramsey County are paying.
They are pretty dull, that information has to, how much each one.
Well, I think we need to get our plan across to these other commissions.
It's uh, it's set by, it's set by the, um. Oh, I forget what it's called, but uh. Mark, it's the agreement, it's the agreement that we have with them that uh, we're gonna be reviewing this some as well.
Well, I think before we review it, I, I think a lot of discussion. From us, the commission has to go into that, 'cause we're picking up about sixty percent, but okay, even if we have sixty percent of the attendees. You know, somebody that's putting one in there, the lights all have to be on for him, the heat is to all be on for the, you know, I, I don't think this, this cost structure is really sitting fair. So I'll get it reviewed.
And, and I appreciate the fact that it's being reviewed, but I also feel very strongly, as, as Ed does, that there has to be more input other than the eight-member board. Because I, I, you'll have to forgive me, but I don't think that that eight-member board understood the seriousness of what was going on. You know, they voted, and I don't know how many people were there when you voted for the across-the-board raise, but I know at least two members were missing, and that was the two city commissioners. That was an over three hundred thousand dollar expense. Then the next meeting, they rescinded it, they didn't understand what they were voting for. And that brought to light the fact that the people on that board did not realize what was happening. And I, and if I'm wrong here, Mark, I want you to.
I might go and correct you.
Okay. The other question I would like to ask is. I'm looking at these numbers and I, and I may go to bearing and answer for the numbers, you know, from the general ledger, from the accounting history to the law enforcement center. My understanding is that last year, the levy involved about six point nine mil total. For this fourteen is six point nine four. Okay. We're gonna be way, way over that at the rate we're going now, and it's not gonna change because we're not gonna get our juveniles back anytime in the very future. I don't know, ten mils is the maximum, how are we going to pay for this? I, I don't understand how we can pay for it if we have a ten mil maximum. To me, if we have a ten mil maximum, when we hit four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, we can't pay for anymore. How are we going to structure this so that we can pay for it? I'm hearing things, I'm hearing things, now, would you let me finish?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm hearing things like, well, let's see, if we got somebody in the recup, in the, in the reentry center. And we get a federal and, and we get a, and the feds call us and they wanna put somebody there, we're gonna kick the local people from the five counties and the cities. We're gonna put them back in jail so that we can make the money in the reentry center on the federal, on the federal or the state prisoners. If that's the case, is it our law enforcement center anymore? Well, we're putting almost a half a million dollars into it here, I would think it should be our law enforcement center before it's a federal law enforcement center. Am I, am I wrong? Is that the way it works?
As first I heard about this.
We have, we have five juveniles in Grand Forks. And I'm estimating that now, okay, I don't know that for a fact. But, but we have, um, who got, they got kicked out. Because we were afraid of closing down because of work, we were so short-staffed and we've been falling so short on our guidelines. And it, it isn't a kick out, I'll, I'll rephrase that, the choice was made to move them out of the facility without any input. From the other counties, or our county, or the city, that was a law enforcement center decision. We have to be able to have more input, and I think that's what Ed is, is pointing at with this. I don't think, I, I don't think that it's bad to have input from all of the, all of the commissioners and all of the counties. We had a start with it when, when, when Mr. Engen came, but we didn't, we didn't solve anything. We didn't solve anything, and I don't think that, I don't think, first of all, that the city commission was aware. Second of all, I don't think that commissioners from the other counties were aware or they would've been there. And, and sweeping it under the table and ignoring it is not the answer, we have got to get this solved because it's an essential part of our counties and our community. So I, I agree with you, Ed, I think we have to ask our legislators for help, we cannot ask us, our county taxpayers to put any more of this bill. We're gonna have to ask the state for help, we need to have input and, and awareness from our legislators, they're the ones that can help us. And when they raise this issue, I can guarantee, because Bill knows this, that all of the other counties are gonna raise the same issue. We can't pay for this, you're mandating this, the costs are going up faster than we can, and you're lowering the taxes for the taxpayers. How do you want this paid for? You're gonna have to put some skin in this game. And I'm sorry, I, I didn't give a lecture, but.
Did very well, I, I think I'll, I'll make a motion that we set up a day, not a meeting day, for our legislators, to meet with them in the evening, five o'clock, six o'clock, whatever you want. Whatever the make you make.
We want all three of them here?
Cause we need to address this law enforcement center issue, I, I have state attorneys coming to me, I have sheriffs coming to me, I have judges talking to me, and they're all disgruntled. So, I'm not gonna sit still and not do anything, I, I just, I just don't feel right at all. And I need to get our legislators involved and see what we need to do for funding. Supplemental funding for these law enforcement centers in the state, I'm sure they're all having a problem. These mandates are coming down and they're not. These mandates are coming down and they're not funded, well, we'll have to ask our legislators, they'll come. You know, I'm not afraid to ask them questions, they may bother me one bit, I know-
We're not-
They've done very well for us, but there's always new issues, there's always new issues that we need to address.
Mr. Brown, when should we go for this meeting?
I don't care, I guess it doesn't matter.
Yeah, you, you do, just, but I think we should get one set.
This month.
This month.
Absolutely.
Don't wait till harvest starts, 'cause two of them are involved in harvest.
I agree, that's why, that's why I thought-
Try to do it this month, I hate to take up an evening, maybe we should try morning, I don't care.
I think come evening would probably be the best rece- reception, I, I don't know.
Whatever is agreeable with them, I guess.
Yeah, I think-
Somebody to call them if I don't find that's fair, agreeable with them.
We're paying one mil right now to the LEC.
We pay one mil for the operation of the LEC. But we pay per, um, incarcerated person to the LEC. And, and it, it's, they're called placements. And, and we have already, this year, as of, I think the date was, uh, what was the date I talked to you about?
End of June.
The end, as of the end of June, we had, we were at a point where we are going to be well over by the end of the year. Well over ten mils by the end of the year.
Can you believe that?
Well, we're looking at three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-four cents.
How much is a mil rate now?
Forty-one, sixty-one.
Forty-two, yeah.
Yeah, we weren't even halfway through the year yet. So, I, I, I can't see how we could not go over the ten mils. And I, the only place to get that money, from what I understand, is from the general fund. Well-
That is ten mils from us, that's ten mils from us and the city.
No, it's ten mils from-
No, it's-
It's ten mils from Ramsey. We only levy six point nine four.
We only levy six nine four, but we're gonna go to, we'll end up going to ten for sure, and then we'll have to take out of the general fund. We're gonna be in the rest, I mean, there, there's no getting around it. And it's, it's just the tip of the iceberg bill, because as you said, thirty dollars a day isn't doing it. It's, it, you know, and, and mistakes were made in not doing gradual increases because of the, because of the situation of, of the incoming money, but it's gone. That incoming money isn't coming in to the law enforcement center anymore.
Yeah. Have you guys ever, I know I've talked to you, Myrna, I guess, checked into going into Grand Forks? Like, these counties came into here, Ramsey County going into that county, wouldn't we be better off?
I'm closing the law enforcement center here. Well-
Wouldn't we be better off? Would, would we get by with ten mils instead of fifteen, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Financially, we might be better off, but is that what's best for our communities?
Well-
For, for these five counties in the city of Dills Lake.
But, i- if you go over ten mil, I suppose you gotta have them vote, you can't just keep taking out of the general fund, it's gonna be degraded sooner or later.
It, it says in the Centricode, if it's over the ten mils, you can take it out of the general fund.
Yeah.
And that's what we did when it was five mil.
Yeah.
For years and years, it was at five mils, and when we had that killing in town, we were way over ten mils.
But now we're, now we're gonna be every year, by the way, Myrna's speaking, we're gonna be way over the ten mils. That's what I'm saying, we, we can take out the general fund, I realize that, but the reason that's gonna drive through. You know, if, if we're paying mils into the general fund every year just for the law enforcement center, the general fund isn't what it should be anymore, right?
Oh, it's the law enforcement center fund.
Exactly.
It's, it's, it's pretty easy to look at one, one, uh, aspect of this and say that this is gonna cause this. But it's, it's, it's way bigger than that, people, I mean, this nine-one-one thing that I told you had to pass in order for all this thing to start washing itself out, fortunately passed, and that's gonna relieve us of a huge financial responsibility that the law enforcement center was giving to the nine-one-one. And so, that being said, that's gonna help the situation immensely. I mean, you're right, but it's not-
Now, that goes to nine-one-one, that doesn't go to law enforcement center.
But we don't have to subsidize them anymore.
Right, but how much is out here, does the extra fifty cents-
Well, it varies all the time, so I can't put a number on it, that's a moving target, and I don't want that number-
But, on an average?
But, it's, uh, it's a huge expense, let's put it at that.
No, no, I'm saying the fifty cents, how much does that generate?
It generates about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
So, about four mils, no less.
So, so, uh, but that's huge, it's huge when you look at the big picture. And-
But that's four mils from our county, that, that involves a lot of counties.
Yeah, but it's still supposed to be that nine-one-one, they're supposed to be LEC. The LEC bill's still there, this nine-one-one shouldn't have nothing to do with the LEC bill.
It all works together, and it has been for years. You know, this, this problem didn't start this year, this problem started a long, long time ago. And this problem really escalated, like I told you a few minutes ago, when, when the federal government shut down and came back into business saying, this is the way we're gonna operate now. Because that took away all our juvenile program, that we have a huge area set aside for us in the LEC. And, and so, now, if we wanna keep that area and not take, you know, Myrna said, oh, we kick out our juveniles for federal prisoners, no, that isn't the fact, that isn't the case. That's never, ever happened. That, that went, that went away long before we talked about putting federal prisoners in that juvenile space. That juvenile program was done long before that. And so-
January to April.
What it takes a look at, you know, what it looks, it, it, it isn't, it, it isn't the appearance that you have to understand it a little bit better before you can start making comments like that, because-
Well, Bill, I guess, I, I, I guess I resent that a little bit because-
Will you let me finish? Will you let me finish now?
But I want you to just, I just want you to hear one thing I'm gonna say. If, if I'm wrong, and if I don't understand, I guess I feel that it's your job as, uh, the chairman of the law enforcement center board to make us understand. And rather than making us understand, what you're telling us is, you don't understand. Well, then, if we don't understand, then make us understand. Don't just tell us we're, we've got it all wrong, make us understand that-
You know, I have to be allowed to do that, right?
Go ahead.
So, another big income source that the law enforcement center enjoyed was having the nine-one-one share with Bodno County, which also dissolved. Bodno County, Goleck County, what? Goleck County. Uh, they liked the way that, that we were doing the mapping on it, and the way that we were doing the mapping and everything on it was the way that it had to be done, so now they're handling their own business, but that was three hundred and some thousand dollars a year. So, all of this stuff combined, um, and then the resignation of the administrator started, when, when all this stuff started happening, um, we decided what we were gonna do is we were gonna promote from within. And it wasn't, that wasn't something that we just decided to do either, we advertised for three or four months, we went outside North Dakota and everything advertising for the administrator. But since that was all combined as a, as an administrator and a director of operations, it was all combined, and that isn't a normal situation either. No, we didn't, we couldn't get any applicants. We had one applicant, uh, that was outside of the law enforcement center, that applied, and would take the job for what was offered. So, we decided what we were gonna do is we were gonna split the two job descriptions and have a finance director, a finance administrator, and an operations administrator. And we were gonna bring everybody up, I hear some more people down on the bottom floor, bring everybody up, um, give them all, um, a little bit more responsibility, and see if we could make that work. I had meetings with all those people when we did that, and said, are you gonna be able to get along together and work together? Everybody said yes. Uh, it didn't happen. And so, that's the problem, that was what the problem, that was. And, that being said, you try to work with people and try to do it, um, we weren't the only ones that experienced that either, because some of the people that we tried to, get to apply were so close to retiring that they've also retired soon. So, these other facilities are finding the same situation in their own facilities that are causing the same problems that we are, we're being asked now, how are we getting through it? But, uh, it's, it's just a challenge that's-
These other facilities you're talking about, though, are they all way over their mils to them?
They're all, we could have the same problems that we are.
But are they over their mils, or, well, it's one thing, the money's another problem.
You know, I don't do their finances work, so I can't tell you that, but, uh-
I was told by people in Grand Forks County this weekend that they have hired two new people at their, at their, two more staff at their, um, juvenile facility. They, um, apparently are doing all the stuff that they, they were able to do now.
They were able, yeah, 'cause I didn't, don't see anything in the paper about them struggling like we are.
They, they're, they're also doing else for everybody else, and that's, you know, they're enjoying a, they're enjoying a revenue source there that that's, you know, allowing you to prosper. But, that's because-
That's what we should've been doing.
That's because we have, we have, we were doing that, Mark.
Well, that's-
We weren't, but we weren't charging, but we weren't, we weren't charging enough money to do it.
Not for our own-
Not, we weren't charging any of that money.
Well, we were, we were charging a lot of money for other federals.
Oh, yeah, I, I understand that, but when the federal source dried up, we, we couldn't get along on thirty dollars a day, and we can't get along on ten dollars a day. But, but my issue again is, if you don't have the money, why do you have a financial administrator that says, let's, let's spend three hundred and seven thousand dollars and, and make sure we've got good staff?
If the federal isn't enough money, maybe you need to quit doing the federal.
They, we don't have any federal.
The federal are, we do have federal-
I mean juveniles, excuse me, we have federal juveniles. We are not looking for other sources of income, is my biggest con, one of my largest concerns, other than taking care of our local community incarceration.
You know, on one side of the fence, that's what people are telling us to do, is take care of your local people. Um, another one of these things that has come down is, our, our ratio that we have of our locals compared to our federal prisoners at that facility has flip flopped from sixteen to forty to forty to sixty.
Yeah.
Right.
And when you look at the numbers that, that, you know, people haven't realized, this is three sixty-five, you know, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. When you look at the numbers and you do a flip flop like that, it amounts to a lot of money lost.
Right.
Right.
And so, now, just even the D, the new DUI laws caused that. The new DUI laws that got enacted last June has caused that.
That hasn't caused the whole-
Yes, it's caused that.
That's caused this whole problem.
That, no, I'm not saying it caused the whole problem, I'm just saying these are all pieces of the problem, these are all pieces of the puzzle.
Well, that, and, that's why, that's why I asked, have you checked with Grand Forks, would we be better off doing, I mean, somewhere you, we can't just keep spending money we don't have.
We've, we've got a thirty-five-year-old facility that needs remodeling if we're gonna do anything bigger.
And there, and there is my point, and this, and this is not, and I'm agreeing with you a hundred percent here, Bill. We have a thirty-year-old facility, and rather than updating that facility and expanding that facility, what we did as a community and as a board is we kept charging thirty dollars a day for a juvenile and an adult, giving money back to the counties and the cities, and sitting on one point three million dollars in our coffers. We weren't looking towards future. And, and that's where the mistake, I'm not saying that, you know, people have this idea that I'm saying that it's the current administration that's, that's causing this problem. No, this problem is already there, but the current administration doesn't have any way of fixing it.
Yeah, we do, Myrna.
How are you, okay, then that brings me to your next question, my next question, how can you fix this bill?
Well, Ed, when the facility is running at its capacity, the numbers are looking good right now, just the labor saving. So, you know, when we say that we might need to go to fifty dollars a day or whatever, and Elizabeth calculates that out, and you come up saying that we're gonna run short, that hasn't happened yet. So, but if we have to take ten percent of our facility and have it sit empty just in case something happens in our community, that's huge. So, we are running the numbers, we're trying to figure out all this stuff to see what it's gonna take to do this. But, when you got requests coming from ten different directions, and you're trying to answer them all, it gets confusing. And it is confusing.
What other direction besides juveniles are you getting this pressure from, Bill?
Well, everybody wants to know from their own community asp- aspect. All the different counties that we're dealing with, why, no, what's gonna happen to us, what's gonna happen to us? We're transporting our kids already, so why can't you? Um, but we have to look at this from all aspects. So, people say, okay, criticize us for, uh, putting a decent wage in the bathroom there, and making a decision to do that, but that's what, that's what got the staff back on, on track. Nobody's gonna say that they aren't worth it, they are worth it, believe me. Was that, has that been something that's been held back?
Yep.
That was held back for, for years too, while, while the counties that were involved with this organization all went and had an HR director that said, you gotta go up and start giving your employees better wages. We enjoyed having the staff at the law enforcement center that, that, uh, we didn't do that to. We, we, we always had people working there, so we didn't worry about it.
Bill, I, I agree with you that they're worth what they're paid, because I don't think there's anybody in this room that wants the job. Um, I think they work very hard. On the other hand, I just would like to comment that since no exit interviews have been done, um, I contacted a couple of the people that I knew had, had worked at the law enforcement center, and not one of them said wages was the reason they left. Not one of them. It, it wasn't wages.
Well, the people there-
So, throwing money at it is Olympic.
The, the people that I talked to, Myrna, were just quite the opposite, so, I mean, there we are. And I, and believe me, I talked to them all too.
Have any exit interviews been done?
You have an HR director that tried to do e- exit interviews. You have a captain that no longer works at the facility, that was in charge of doing exit interviews, that didn't do them. You have a professional consulting firm that tried to do exit interviews, couldn't get them. And now the HR director is trying to do them as well, they can't. When people won't talk, people won't talk. I don't know why they will talk to you or you.
I do.
I'll tell you.
I'll tell you right now. 'Cause they trust people, they trust us. Bill, I had a companion, she was too busy to do exit interviews. I also was told at the last meeting, there were no exit interviews done, that was wrong. I also was told at the last meeting, there were no exit interviews done, that was wrong. I had somebody, I had one of the former employees read the newspaper and come in and say, that's wrong, that's wrong in the newspaper. I said, what do you mean it's wrong in the newspaper? He said, I've been exit interviewed. You're, you're-
So what got done?
They sat there at the meeting, they all told us they didn't get done.
Who?
Peggy, Danny, they both said there were no exit interviews done. And there was, there was one. And that was done by the telephone, which I think is in very poor case.
Well, sure it is.
But we're okay with that? That's how we're gonna do it?
And you say that all of these people can't get an exit interview, but I watch-
Do you call, do you call a telephone conversation an exit interview?
No, I don't.
See, that's what you just said though.
But I, but I-
It was done by phone.
But these, but these-
According to the paper, it was, I mean, according to the exit interview, it was. But I don't call that an exit interview.
I talked to them all too, but it doesn't, that shouldn't qualify for an exit interview. If you wanna do an exit interview and we put you in charge of doing exit interviews, you come forward with them. Because nobody else needs to be able to get them.
And isn't that funny, because none of those people I've come to have been contacted by phone or any other way?
It's because if they're gonna be held accountable for what they say, they're not gonna say that.
Nope.
Oh, oh, I don't believe that, cuz they got other jobs and they're willing to come to any board meeting you wanna have. They'd be happy to tell you what's going on.
We invited one of them to come three or four times and drug this out for a month and a half, Myrna, and that person did not show up.
Why just one? Why didn't you go to some other person?
They won't sign letters to the attorney.
That was, that was one person.
You know, it's-
And he was fired. Would you sign it?
Dan didn't write that letter.
No, Dan did not write that.
He wrote that letter, I called him up to him, he had nothing to do with it.
See?
I can publish it.
See?
Okay, are we done with this? I will put in my two cents worth on the Law Enforcement Center, especially tomorrow. It's broke, it's broke bad, it can be fixed. I do not believe it can be fixed currently until some people get their head out of the sand. But it can be fixed, we don't need to haul people to Grand Forks, we don't need to close the Law Enforcement Center. We need to get responsibility. And that's the problem we have right now, there's no responsibility. There's finger pointing, there's name calling, there's no responsibility. And, you know, tomorrow I'm gonna ask again if we have control of the overtime. We do not, we are spending ludicrous amount of money on overtime.
You're wrong, Mark.
Bill, I know somebody who's got forty hours.
You are wrong.
No, I'm not, Bill. You are listening to two people-
This is not the way to run a business.
Uh, no.
When you have two board members who are on absolute opposite sides of a table, absolute one hundred percent opposite sides of a table, you have an ineffective-
Bill, we, we have a captain, Bill, who's in charge of the jail, who's never worked in the jail. How can, how can I be in charge of people who I don't know what their jobs are?
We're gonna send them to corrections prison next month.
So we're gonna, and we're-
And that's gonna take the slot for six months.
Yeah, and so that's another slot that's not gonna be filled with a juvenile officer.
Mark, you, you went on record saying you were unemployed, you are.
That's your opinion, Bill.
You went on record saying that.
Another issue with the Law Enforcement Center, and I'm gonna bring it up now, is that there's absolutely no input allowed to the people that are currently working there and are trying as hard as they can to hang on to their jobs and make it better so that it can work.
That is an absolute false statement.
No, it is not, because if they call me on the phone and tell me that, then it is a true statement. If they've never been asked for input, then it is a true statement. Why would they lie to me?
I don't know why.
Because they want you to look bad, apparently, cuz that's all I ever, all I ever see here is people trying not to look bad. And, but, Bill, let's, let's be clear here about why they're not saying that to you. The reason they're not saying that to you is because they feel that you are one thousand percent behind your administration, no matter what happens. Let me be, let me be crystal clear on that. They don't trust you, they don't trust Hannah Wyler, they feel that she's one hundred percent behind administration. They don't trust you because they feel that no matter what they say, you're not gonna believe a word they say. Because if it has anything to do that is critical of current administration, it's a lie. And I'm, I, you can quote me in the newspaper because that's what I hear from everyone that talks to me.
Maybe you, maybe you need a job on the board.
Don't push me, Bill.
Any other part for your business, Bill?
I suppose, uh, Sandy will probably be coming to us uh, with a request election that holds up for uh, the Central Planning Council and I'll probably have to set up a date for that.
She, she's had it in the paper already.
Which house is that?
Uh, Scotts City, she's, she's had it in the paper and um, she has issues with um, I think it's Cooley, Tom Chaford, Pen?
Yes.
Is that Cooley? Lee, she's had it with me and she's gonna go out and look at it, um, I think she's gonna call you, Kevin, to go with her, maybe.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, just so the board's aware of it, um, Lee was really frustrated in the last, but um, I think, I don't know if she's got any bits on the house, I know it's been advertised.
I just got at least one. And then we'll have, you know, you know-
Oh, we want to sit again?
Yeah, or, yeah.
Okay, Myrna?
Working, as I said, with the, with the former Devils Lake and, and on the board, on uh, um, committee for the Wellness Center, things are moving along relaxed again about, you know, would it be more cost effective and so on and so forth while having the election injunction as a general, I'll report back to you at the next meeting. Have, we're having a few um, personnel issues in um, the District Health Unit, I'm hoping that those are going to be um, cleared by the, by the next meeting, it actually doesn't have much to do with Roundtree Colony, it's against another colony that those issues are surfacing. I have a new person for the tobacco coalition board, um, and my mind is, wait, I can't remember, I mean, she's a nurse. And that's about, what I've got, which I touched on social services seems to be on your own. Again, I, and it probably should be in the minutes that even, that our director of our social service board works very, very hard to keep people on an even keel in very, very stressful settings. Uh, she should be commended for that. Um, it's, it's, it's a horribly difficult job and, and she works very hard to allow them time to come address with the, with the problems that they deal with. That's all I got.
Uh, I report, everything is good, but we need to uh-
There's a person that's, her position ended on June thirtieth and we did a publication. Um, the person that's on there cannot be reappointed. Three times they can be appointed and then they're off, they have to be off for a year before they can be appointed again.
Who's that?
I can't think of the name now.
I'm trying to think, I said right next to her, I can't remember what her name is.
Nancy one that shared her role.
I know the city has one too that-
Carl must have been there.
Carl is gone. It could, it could be Nancy.
It could be Nancy, I mean, that's a common-
So we need, we need someone to work on the colony?
Right, and we're advertising, but if we don't get anybody, you guys might wanna think of somebody at the next for the next meeting.
Mm, yeah.
And I have one more request, can we start the meeting a little earlier on July fifteenth at like four thirty instead of five thirty? So we get done by six?
What's at six? You taking us home for summer or?
Yeah, right. If you wanna go to Miami. No, I don't just happen.
I don't have a problem with that.
Four thirty, so, did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion now. Those motions are second?
Second.
So motion's the second, I'll appear to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pulls the inside, motion carried. Hear that, that?
We still have a motion on the table?
I think we voted on that one.
We did.
To set up a meeting with the legislators. I'll give them, Dave a call and see what Dave looks at.
Did you have Kevin there for that meeting and social service, right? I don't think any other departments we should have there?
Well, we can just invite all of the council people to come, Casey, help.
So what you need for roses and the ideas we wanna do and, you know.
Are you gonna be gone any days, Kevin?
Just the fourth and the third.
Oh, well, I won't be here either. We're not gonna be that quick, are we? No.
And then the Heritage Center Board, everything's just coming up roses all the time, everything's just going forward. We have a very, very good director, I'm, I'm very happy.
Rachel Phillips Stanley was ecstatic with all her, the whole situation after the families got rid of us.
It was kinda surprising because, you know, we didn't really know what to expect cuz we were gonna get a percentage. They were sold out basically both nights, it was unbelievable. It was full, and the museum was full, so that was another plus to it.
And I already made reservations to go in the app was because I couldn't get to this.
No, it was, it was, it was good. And I, and I also was told that the most she's ever played for was three hundred people and she played for six hundred people per night here, so. Ramsey County came out and supported it very well. And then, well, my opinion on the Law Enforcement Center bill, or is completely opposite of Bill's, but, you know, I think we both wanna work forward and get it, but, you know, we just both have different ways of seeing how it's going now. I invite and encourage commissioners to come to the board meeting tomorrow. I would like your input on which direction we should go. I just look at it as a business and I don't believe it's being run as a business, I, I believe it's, you know, we're just, that's all we're looking at is numbers and we can't just look at the numbers, we have to look at the services that it needs to provide to Ramsey County.
That's key right there, the key word there is services, you know, and that's, that's what we have to do.
If we can't turn a profit, we'll break even, you know, and, and we'll have to find a way to do that.
That's all we're supposed to.
That's all we're supposed to, absolutely. And maybe we're used to the gravy train that we had and, and that gravy train is gone. But I believe we can have our, our juveniles here, I don't believe we're wasting and throwing out dollars out the window, but, you know, that's just my opinion, I think we can tighten our belt and, and make this work. I, I got told, Mark, I believe it's, it's broke, but I believe it can be fixed.
Well, I, I, I've never heard it and I guess, I remember you, you told me, but the feds got smart on these, that, that juveniles. They had eight in this location, eight in this location, eight in this location. And five different locations and they just put them all together.
Yeah.
And all they've got, forty in one spot and they're educating them and using the same teachers for forty instead of using them for eight. And they're saying sell the money, and the feds, we know that, they're doing cut corners all the time, you know. They've gotten smarter around the businesses, you know, we need to get smarter too. That's where the Federal juveniles went.
Absolutely.
You know, and we're just too much bad.
But, but we're not-
House them and have eight.
Well, you don't, we don't want the Federals. Right, right, you know, we don't-
We should just quit using that word, Federals. That's, that one I was going, like Commissioner Scrubby said, you know, nine hundred thousand dollars, they gotta make that. I figured you would stop it. I don't know, that's the cost of holiday juveniles, and you can see why the feds did something different, you know. You would, I would, you know.
In the perfect world, it'd be empty.
Yeah.
You know?
That'd be nice.
And, and I need everybody to understand that that's exactly what we're doing, is we're trying to figure out financially where this whole picture goes. And there's a lot of different pieces to this puzzle. And to focus on one of them and say, well, that's the problem or that's the answer, it doesn't work that way. We have to focus on all of them and figure out what's best, not only for the Law Enforcement Center, but for the community. It might be cheaper to put up a facility for ju, local juveniles than to house them at that facility. Simply because the offset of putting Federal prisoners in there at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year of income as opposed to leaving a sift just in case you have one of your twenty-four juveniles a year that needs it. It's huge, it's all huge. So we're looking into a lot of different aspects of it. And I think it's going forward as fast as it can go forward. I think that this thing was two and a half months into the recovery process before this even came up. And I think it's all stems from issues that were brought up by disgruntled employees or disgruntled employees' family members or whatever, and there was too much weight put on that. In that type of a business, people come and go a lot. We're not gonna attest to that, there's dozens and dozens of names on that list. But pointing the finger at any particular person that was the cause of that doesn't do any good at all. So dealing with the issues that are going on out there is a very, very high priority out there. And I am down there very, very regularly and I do know what's going on down there. I will stand up for it. Anybody wants to talk to me about that, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you about it, but there's nothing to hide, but to listen to stuff from the community and say you know what's going on at the Law Enforcement Center is absolutely the long thing to do.
Sixteen people been fired since last August? Not to figure, at least?
No.
Fired or quit?
Fired or given the choice to resign.
Two peo, two people have been fired.
Three have been fired, or given the choice to resign. And you know what, what I'm gonna say here is when your operations administrator sits at a public meeting and says it's gonna cost, or six or seven people have left the Law Enforcement Center since the first of September, does that mean you don't know what's going on? Does that, I mean, you don't realize that twenty-five people have left? It shakes my faith. When your financial administrator says it's gonna cost two hundred and fifty dollars a day to house a juvenile, and then you have a board member who points at you and says, don't you be telling people in the community this, it means that, that board doesn't know what's going on. Or they don't want anybody else to know what's going on, and that's my issue. We have this thing, it's called transparency in government, and assuming that the Law Enforcement Center is not a government entity, when it's hired by a government entity, it follows the same rules.
When you ask for, when you ask for a number and you get the number, but the number is fluid. You know, that's the reason why I said I wouldn't full wrong say it in that, but that's the number that you asked for.
You didn't say that.
That's exactly why.
No, Peggy, Peggy said it's gonna cost one hundred and fifty dollars a year.
And it probably will, I think the judge realizes that, I met with him last week.
This is precisely why I would like-
It probably will, I'm starting to, remember I said that?
That's exactly right, this is precisely why commissioners need to be on these meetings.
Well, I was there last time when I thought it was taboo and your ability, ability of fighting people like in your administration, I think that would have been very good.
Ability of fighting people like in your administration, I think that was a very difficult, very. It wasn't a problem to begin with, so they didn't.
Bill, they're scared to death. They're all scared to death. That's why you don't hear anything because they're scared to death.
That shows you biased.
That shows that you're biased toward administration and it's not a good, it's not a good.
I asked, uh, we, we brought that up when Judge Patty and I met. And Patty says it works that way a lot for the government. If you have to go to the board or whatever to, to, uh, do that. But what do you do in a situation where somebody just consistently calls in for sick to work? And, uh, and you gotta bring in somebody at overtime and everything like that and it's just a consistent problem. And you don't have the ability to do anything. And, and they do it, and it becomes more and more and more often because they can't fire me anyway.
Why can't we fire you?
Well, because you said no.
We've got a board.
All you have to do is put the board together and we can fire them.
Then they have to have a board meeting.
Then have a board, then have a board.
They realize too that. Is that a problem?
No.
We just wanted to have to let the motion go because it's not a problem. But to take that kind of authority.
Who let the motion go?
Who let the motion go? We all did because it was we, the whole board. Mark made the motion and Mike's definitely seconded it. And we didn't have any discussion that, that said that it was any kind of a problem. But why do you need to take that authority away from people who you hired to give that authority?
Cause they're abusing that authority.
If you want to use that authority, Mark, those who got fired, I mean, two people got fired, they deserved it.
Two people got fired. I don't know if they deserved it, but the rest of them were intimidated into quitting.
I have the information that Patty says that they deserved it.
I have a stack of information inside that, that tells me the administration deserves it.
Those people won't even come to a meeting and defend themselves, Mark. I mean, what do you think?
Because they know that you as a board member are not behind them.
You don't even wanna listen to them, Bill.
You don't, you don't wanna listen to anybody who has any criticism of anyone in a position of police authority. And that's not a way to operate.
So, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion is there? Second?
Second.